Okay, we're gonna call the February 21st, 2013 City Council Meeting to order. If you'll please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have two proclamations this evening. Ms. Reynolds, would you join me? Whereas, reading is the foundation of education for people of all ages, and whereas, reading for enjoyment and enlightenment can enrich the lives of individuals, and whereas the Spring 2013 One Book Project can foster a sense of community through a shared reading experience, and whereas the Spring 2013 One Book Project can broaden and deepen an appreciation for Woody Guthrie, and whereas the city received grants from the Oklahoma Humanities Council and Oklahoma Arts Council to support this project, and whereas the City of Stillwater is collaborating with Oklahoma State University Library, Charar Museum of Stillwater History, and many other local, state, and national organizations to present One Book, One Community: Stillwater Reads: Woody Guthrie. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, and my fellow city councilors, hereby encourage all community members to participate in One Book, One Community: Stillwater Reads: Woody Guthrie by reading and discussing Woody Guthrie's autobiographical novel Bound for Glory and attending the kickoff event on February 28th, 2013, at 7:00 PM at the Stillwater Public Library, and other programs scheduled in March and April. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, and I gave each of you a brochure of our upcoming events, and there's a lot more brochures at the library for anyone in the community that would like to pick one up. We're really excited about bringing this event to Stillwater and reading Woody Guthrie's Bound for Glory. A highlight event is Woody Guthrie's granddaughter, Anna Canoni, will be traveling to Oklahoma to participate in our program, and also, the Woody Guthrie Archives are being relocated to Tulsa, Oklahoma, so we're excited to be a part of that. So, thank you, and we hope you'll participate.
And we have another proclamation this evening. Whereas, the Peace Corps has become an enduring symbol of the United States' commitment to encourage progress, create opportunity, and expand development at the grassroots level in the developing world, and whereas, since 1961, more than 210,000 Americans have served as Peace Corps volunteers in 139 countries, and during the course of the last 52 years, 54 men and women from Stillwater have responded to the United States' call to join the Peace Corps, and whereas, Peace Corps volunteers have made significant and lasting contributions around the world in agriculture, business development, information technology, education, as well as health and HIV/AIDS, and have improved the lives of individuals and communities worldwide, and whereas, Peace Corps volunteers enriched by their experiences overseas have brought their communities throughout the United States a deeper understanding of other cultures and traditions, thereby bringing a domestic dividend to our nation, and whereas, the City of Stillwater recognizes the achievements of the Peace Corps and honors its volunteers, past and present, and reaffirms the United States' commitment to helping people help themselves throughout the world. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of February 24th to March 2nd, 2013, in the City of Stillwater as Peace Corps Week. The representative from Peace Corps could not be with us tonight, but we will be getting this proclamation to them. Okay, that takes us to the consent docket, and we have items A through F on the consent docket. Does any councillor wish to remove an item from the consent docket?
Item E, please.
Item E. Any other items?
No, sir. I would move approval of item A through F excluding E.
Second. Motion of second on the consent docket for all items except item E. And that passes five to zero. All our public comments are on public hearings, so it'll take us to item E on the consent docket. Councillor Pena, yes to have that pulled.
I'd just like to have a little bit more information upon what geophysical operations really mean. I've got an idea, but if you give me some enlightenment.
Okay, in this particular case, both are representing Devon Energy. They're looking at a large acreage north and west of the city for possible oral exploration. 1,700 acres, a large part of affects the city property near Lake Mercury. This agreement is to allow them to do geophysical testing. Normally, that involves bringing in equipment into an area to where they can do the testing, the geophysical testing. In this case, they are using a non-invasive approach, which they bring by helicopter, lower a piece of equipment to a specific site on the property, conduct the geo-testing, then remove the piece of equipment, so they don't have to clear any trees or any paths from our property. So, it's pretty non-invasive. They've offered us the standard rate of $10 per acre to do this seismic testing, and we think it'll have no harmful effects on the land, so we'd recommend allowing them to proceed with that. Thank you.
And I saw on the report that there are two types of ways to do seismic tests, and not just the how you get the equipment in, but the actual tests.
Right.
And this is the less invasive of those tests, isn't it?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. And what was the fee per acre? Wasn't it $20 an acre?
$10 per acre. He said $10.
Okay. Any other questions on this item?
I'm good. Thank you.
I would move approval. Second.
Motion of second to approve item F. Or item E, excuse me. And that passes five to zero. That takes us down to public hearings, and our first public hearing was continued from February 4th, and it's to receive public input regarding a request for map amendment for property located at 799 East Mercury Avenue from industrial general to residential to family and multifamily. Do we have good notice?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful.
Good evening. Patty Evans, Development Services. This item is a request for a map amendment for property addressed at 799 East Mercury Avenue. The property is approximately 31.49 acres, shown as the hatched area here on this map. The current zoning on the property is IG, General Industrial, and the requested zoning district is RTM, two-family and multifamily. The zoning to the east is also general industrial, shown over here in the gray. On the west is CG, the pink area. On the north is RTM, that's the yellow, and that's two-family, multifamily. And on the south is a small portion of the property touches the CS, commercial shopping, and the rest of the area is RTM, two-family and multifamily. Concrete crushing facility was located on this property, on the west portion of this property at one time, and the aerial shows the remains of that operation, while the east portion looks like it's mainly in the natural vegetation state. An apartment complex is located here on Perkins Road, and just to the east of it is the location for Aspen Heights. West of the property is a convenience store and the new location for Car Mart. To the south, the property is vacant, and the rest of it is Lakeview Ridge subdivision. And to the east is, on the industrial property, are two buildings that are currently used for storage. These are the uses that are permitted in the property's current zoning of general industrial: animal and pet keeping, construction, all types of manufacturing, public administration, telecommunication tower, warehousing, and waste management and remediation. And these are the uses permitted in the requested zoning district of RTM: boarding and roofing houses, churches, multifamily, up to 20 units per acre, townhouses and two-family or duplexes. The RTM uses are considered to be less intensive than the industrial uses, and multifamily is considered a buffer between single-family and the more intensive uses of commercial or industrial zoning districts. The findings include that the 2001 Comprehensive Plan indicates a future land use of industrial general; the proposed map amendment would allow for multifamily development opportunities; there are other vacant or underutilized industrial zoned tracts for industrial development; and the approval of the request will remove vacant industrial property from the future industrial development. Also, the city did receive a protest petition for this map amendment. The petition did not meet the requirements, therefore, the approval of the map amendment will not require the four-fifths vote of the council. Are there any questions?
Could you put the map back up, please? We have RTM to the north and to the south of the subject tract.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, and we're gonna open up the public hearing, and we have several requests to speak, both in favor and against this. Our normal practice is to have those speaking in favor to speak first. The one request that I do make is that we do have lots of people present that want to speak and want to be heard. The same statement over and over doesn't, whether for or against, doesn't help in making decisions, but everyone that has signed up will be heard. I ask that everyone please use proper decorum. This is a business meeting. I have faith that everyone's gonna behave properly, so. With that, we will go with the people that have signed up to speak in favor, and the first is Roger Goss.
Roger Goss, 113 East State, representative for the applicant. I have the applicant with me tonight, Mr. Paul Levine, and the owner of the property, Robert Kearns. We're requesting a RTM zone, rezoning of this piece of IG property that seemed to get sandwiched in when the property to the north was rezoned RTM for Aspen Heights within the last year. The staff report notes that public facilities and improvements are available. The comp plan currently, current comp plan designates everything from Lakeview North as IG industrial general, or industrial uses. The proposed comp plan shows the property from Lakeview North as proposed to be low-density, and I'm gonna add residential, it doesn't say that, but low-density, less than 20 units per acre in the proposed comp plan, which y'all will hear later. I'm gonna skip some of my comments, 'cause Patty covered them very well. This was before the planning commission a couple of weeks ago. Basically, you had no recommendation because it was a tied vote. There were several issues that were more along technical requirements for the site versus land use issues on the site. The Patty's showed what uses could be put on this property, and just for a quick, I'm not gonna go back through all that, but you could put a vet hospital, a kennel, a stable if, with it zoned IG. You could put a construction yard like Kearns or Heritage or Lambert. You could put a ready-mix plant on this property. It would allow more business forms, facility on this plant, on this property. Motor pool, similar like the OSU or like the school system has. Put administrative buildings there for fire, police, water department. There could be a truck terminal there for any of the oilfield business that's going on. Intermodal transportation facility could be put on there. Truck and trailer manufacturing. Code even allows, under the IG, you could put in utility-type facilities like the CRE yard south of town, or Stillwater Electric Utility here in town, or even Boomer Lakes Gas Turbine Plant could go on that property. Warehousing and storage, something similar to what Kicker had up on the north Perkins Road, north of, I think it's Richmond. Up there, some high base storage. Waste management and remediation, Allied Waste could relocate on that property with all their garbage trucks and dumpsters. A recycling center could go in there. These type of uses, we don't feel are appropriate to be sandwiched in between these residential, now residentially zoned properties, and that's why we're asking for the RTM rezoning. The comments that were submitted to the city in the petition, just like to quickly address. The RTM will not allow multi-story buildings within five feet of the property line. The water drainage off any project on this property will be handled according to the city regs, which are very stringent and, from experience, are being looked over very closely. The, according to staff report, water availability is not an issue, and there was an insinuation that this would create parking, continue parking, or parking problems on the neighborhood to the south. I just don't see how that's gonna be. Any residential, that multifamily that goes in on this property's got, the city has pretty good requirements on how much parking you put in, and what I'm seeing lately is landlords are tending to put enough in, so they don't have that problem. So, we would ask that you consider rezoning this to RTM, feeling that the IG is inappropriate the way the adjacent zoning's been going. Any questions?
Any questions? Just out of curiosity, why didn't you submit this as a PUD?
Time, expense, and RTMs, we feel is appropriate for it, and it would probably still been an RTM PUD.
Right. You mentioned that it wouldn't be five foot to the back of the property, so what will it be set back?
The city code, well, building code requires an additional three feet for every story, and this property, RTM, is limited to 35 feet in height, so that's basically three stories. So, a property, a multi-story property couldn't be located any closer than 11 feet. That's not a big deal, but that's the fact.
Right, so it could be as close as 11.
Yes, sir.
To the back of the property. Do you have any idea what the plan is at this point?
We're asking for zoning.
No, but I'm asking.
We're asking for zoning. Thank you. I will, I will say that if the property to the south was zoned single-family, it'd be a lot better setback, I think more compatible setback.
Right.
I think it's, there's a trap right now. You got the RTM to the south, and it's really not compatible with that neighborhood. Jason, thank you.
I did forget to mention, and I apologize, not for you, Mr. Goss, I did forget to mention, there is a five-minute limit on our public hearings, and Mr. Dorman will be hitting the start button, and I always forget what it looks like on that side.
You should, you should get a warning at one minute. It will start to flash.
Okay. And then the beep, if it beeps at you when you're speaking, that doesn't mean cut it off mid-word, but kinda means finish the thought. So, if extra time is needed, that is something that can be addressed case by case, but that's what the beeps and the lights mean, and I apologize for not throwing that out there at the beginning. Okay, our next request is from Paul Levine Levine.
Evening. Yes, my name is Paul Levine, 25 Twin Walls Lane, west of Connecticut is my address, and I am here representing Park Seven Group, the developer. And, yeah, I'd just like to reiterate the points that Roger has made that we feel strong.
Mr. Could you speak up a little louder?
Sure. I'll reiterate the points that Roger had made that were certainly believed that this particular location lends itself to our proposed use of multifamily because of the uses to the north and to the south, and the adequate road system and utility infrastructure. You know, they have gone through those points as far as what could be put there in industrial use, so I'll be here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Do we have any questions? Thank you. And then the last request to speak in favor is Robert Kearns.
Bob Kearns, 4111 Dare Crossing. I'm real surprised that we have any opposition to this. I thought everyone would be bringing me flowers or something for doing this. My original use for this land is an operation that starts early in the mornings in the summer times, you know, sometimes 3:00 in the morning, a lot of trucks, a lot of equipment moving around, and with the cities, obviously have decided that this should be a residential area. They've kinda left my property in an island here, and I think what my intended use for it'd be probably inappropriate at this point, and I just wanted to say that I think that this would be a much better use for this land than what it's presently zoned for.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Kearns? Okay. As we start into the request to speak against the application, I do want to recognize that I know I have received, and I'm making an assumption the rest of the council has received, multiple emails from people with comments, and I don't know if it's so much that I apologize that I haven't personally responded to each one, but I do want to recognize that I have received emails, and I have read them, and trust me, the email comments are taken into account also. On that note, there is also, a letter was mailed in from a citizen that was not able to be here tonight, but asked that it be part of the record, and it was from a Merrill Price, and it's dated January 31, 2013, so that will also be part of, part of the record. Okay, our first request to speak, and I believe you do have a presentation, and you have asked for additional speaking time, is it Brian, is it Frainer? Frainer? Okay, Mr. Frainer, you were...
Would it be okay if I substituted another representative from our department to go first, I will last? Would that be okay?
Oh, that would be, that would be just fine. That'd be just fine. Next on the list is Gina Noble.
Councilman, mayor, vice mayor. My name is Gina Noble, and I live at 906 Lauren Lane. I live in the Lakeview Ridge neighborhood. I was the first homeowner in this neighborhood. I'm here to introduce my neighbor's strong opposition to the proposed rezoning at 799 East Mercury Avenue from industrial general to residential two-family and multifamily. 59 of the 87 Lakeview Ridge homeowners within 300 feet, and two commercial property owners within 300 feet, have opposed the rezoning in writing. The planning commission didn't recommend the rezoning, and neither do we. We request that you keep Mercury Avenue as the barrier between residential, between single-family and residential. Lakeview Ridge is single-family homes. We might not be zoned that way, but we should be zoned that way. We are single-family homes. We're a single-family neighborhood. Aspen Heights is in the process of building 750, approximately 750 units on the north side of Mercury Avenue. Keep Mercury Avenue the barrier. Zone the land on the south side that we're speaking of, the land we're speaking of, as residential, single-family. That's a better use for this land than multifamily. Local government has a greater effect on citizens' day-to-day lives than any other level of government, and we respect what you do. That's why these tax-paying citizens behind me, and those represented on paper, are asking each of you to please vote no on the rezoning and to change our neighborhood to residential, single-family. We want to preserve our affordable, single-family neighborhood. We want you to change the zoning to single-family because we are and we have been single-family. We have a neighborhood association. We have a neighborhood association. We absolutely promote smart planned growth for Stillwater. We're Stillwater residents, but we oppose growth that places financial burden on established homeowners. Homeowners who have chosen to make Stillwater their home. We've also heard the argument that almost half of your neighbors are renters. Why does that matter? It's still a single-family home. It's still a single-family neighborhood. It doesn't matter who rents or who owns. The point is, we are a single-family neighborhood. I chose to buy a home next to a commercial property. We all did. It was a calculated decision on our part. We knew what we were doing. We never envisioned a densely populated complex lurking three stories over our fence, allowing strangers to intrude into our lives, because they are able to peer into our backyards, our bedroom windows, and our daily routines. Keep Mercury Avenue as the barrier between residential, single, and residential, two, and multifamily. We've been told it's nothing personal, but it is to us. It's our home, and your decision tonight affects our homes and our families. Our arguments are based on statistics and facts, not emotions. Brian Frainer will say our arguments. We urge you to consider building and advancing Stillwater's growth with more single-family neighborhoods, like ours. That's where families wanna live, not in densely populated apartment complexes, especially student housing complexes. That's not how you build Stillwater. Stillwater reaps the benefits when its neighborhoods thrive. We don't want to be another Stillwater neighborhood negatively affected by rezoning. Why is it that Stillwater neighborhoods must continually fight to stay residential, single? When is enough enough? We're asking for it to be enough. Please grow our beloved city, like I know you are, with smart growth that doesn't hurt existing homeowners, or diminish existing neighborhoods. They're important. Please protect our single-family neighborhood, and the citizens who voted for... Please vote no on the rezoning. Please change our zoning to the proper zoning: residential, single, family. Thank you.
Next up, Bridget Miller.
I'm Dr. Bridget Miller, and I currently own the home at 910 East Lauren Lane, and I'm gonna try to skip to the important points here, 'cause I know that Brian's gonna cover some of the stuff that I have in my statement. Just for reference, my home is on the north side of Lauren Lane, and it is immediately adjacent to the lot in question, and I've come here tonight to voice my strong opposition to the proposed rezoning, and put a human face to those who would be affected by... a human face to those who would be affected by such a rezoning. I oppose the rezoning for a number of reasons, all of which are exacerbated by the fact that Aspen Heights has already begun to build immediately north of Mercury Avenue. First and foremost, I'm concerned about my privacy and my personal safety. I purchased my home nine years ago, and I have never felt threatened or concerned because my home is nestled in among other professionals, young families, and retirees. If the lot is rezoned, then the development group would be allowed to build within five to eleven feet of my back fence. I realize the setback increases as we add floors, but the second and third floor would no doubt be able to see into my backyard and my home. This threat to my personal safety and my privacy is significant. In addition, I'm also an avid runner and cyclist and regularly utilize Lakeview, Marine, Perkins, Jardoe, and Airport for training. Most of these streets do not have sidewalks, nor do they have bike lanes. The addition of as many as fifteen hundred upwards of two to three thousand cars in this area along these narrow streets in and around this area makes my running and biking significantly more dangerous. My second concern centers around the impact on property value and character of my current neighborhood. Having this type of high-density housing in such close proximity will all but eliminate the charm and character that drew me there in the first place. I'm the first and only homeowner of my home, which I purchased in August of 2004. And I was probably, though Gina was first, I was probably one of the first twenty to buy into Lakeview Ridge. We have a homeowners' association and we work really hard to maintain the charm of the neighborhood. Allowing a large multifamily dwelling to be built so close is going to change our quiet neighborhood and put a shadow on our community. The inevitable traffic congestion that will result from the addition of another high-density dwelling in such a small area undermines those characteristics that attracted me to this neighborhood nine years ago. I purposely bought a house in northeast Stillwater so that I could run and bike from my house in and around Boomer Lake and along those country roads. Lakeview Ridge was an affordable subdivision full of single-family homes, which was exactly what I'd been looking for. Creating more high-density residences will exponentially increase the car traffic in this area. My only recourse in this situation is to come here tonight and voice my concerns directly to those individuals who've been elected to serve the community and protect the best interests of Stillwater. I ask that you vote down the proposed rezoning. I am confident that the problems that will certainly develop if this land is rezoned far outweigh any benefits. I've been a professor at OSU and Stillwater resident and homeowner for almost nine years, and I support the growth of community, but not when that burden of that growth costs the current residents their privacy, sense of safety, financial investment, and quality of life. Respectfully, Dr. Bridget Miller.
Next request is from Emily Snow.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emily Snow. I live at 818 East Lauren Lane. The proposed rezoning would come within five to eleven feet of my back fence. I'm here with everyone else to ask you to please not do this. When this gentleman listed off the many uses of the IG zoning that it currently is, I think any of us would take any of those uses over a multifamily complex sitting on that land. I purchased my house a year and a half ago. I'm a single parent. It took everything that I had to move to Stillwater and relocate here and to make the very best decision that I could make as far as the financial investment part into my house. And I feel like now all of that could be erased if this zoning goes through and this new complex is allowed to be built there. I'm also concerned about the impact that Aspen Heights is going to have on our neighborhood. Those are, while it's seven hundred and fifty units, it's two, three, and four bedroom units, so we're looking at possibly three thousand people, three thousand cars on this small little area of town. I've already had to work with the school district to get the bus route changed because our bus stop was originally on Lakeview and we had a couple of close calls. So I'm concerned that with the influx of traffic and people that we aren't going to experience more problems in addition to lowering our property values and having trouble to sell. So thank you for your time and please, please vote with your conscience.
Next request, Danielle Dugat.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Danielle Dugat, and I want to present my argument against the rezoning for, from a personal side. I know my other colleague, or the other individuals who we're speaking against are providing very good arguments. I would like to bring apart the concern that my husband and I have. I moved to Stillwater ten years ago to attend vet school. I've stayed ever since. I decided to make this my home. I now work as a faculty member at the university, and I really enjoy the peacefulness that Stillwater brings. I come from a very large state, California, very large city, and I was very impressed coming to Stillwater to the new environment. I lived in an apartment on the south side of town for six years while I attended school. I purposely, four years ago, bought my very first home, with my mother's help, bought my very first home and is extremely proud of moving to this home here on the north side of town where I felt like it was a more peaceful, quiet community where we could raise our five-year-old son. What concerns me is I live at 2323 North Hartford. I live at the area where my son calls the forest, and he plays in there across the street from us every chance he gets. He rides his tractor. He plays on the neighbor next to us. They have built a little treehouse there. We like the fact that our neighborhood is very quiet, and I feel safe with my son in the front yard. What concerns me is bringing a three-story apartment building in such close proximity would make us feel uncertain of our child's safety in our own front yard. I like the fact that we don't have that concern of the increase in traffic that this could potentially bring to our family, and it is very concerning that if that does happen, I lose that sense of safety that we felt like we have achieved moving into this neighborhood just four years ago. So I thank you for your consideration and would hope that you would take our personal considerations into voting against the rezoning.
My name's Kyle Lucas, and my wife and I currently live at 802 East Lauren Lane. It's in the U portion, furthest west. And like many other people, this property that's being built can be built eleven feet off of our back fence. Not only that, for my wife and I, we bought our house in May. We got married in May. If there was a three-story apartment complex eleven feet off the back fence of that property, we wouldn't have bought there. We wouldn't have chosen this house as a house to start our family in. We like the charm of it, like Dr. Miller said. At some point, we want to have kids. We want to be able to raise kids and allow them to play, whether they're in our backyard or front yard. I'm not too far removed from going to school at Oklahoma State. I know how easy it is to throw anything off of a three-story apartment complex with the possibility of hitting my roof, my back porch, throwing it across all the way into the yard in front of my house. My, our, my wife and I, our bedroom windows on the backside of the house. I don't, I don't want to know that somebody can look into my back, my bedroom window and see me sleep. That's an unnerving and a scary feeling to have. It's scary to me that, to know that my kids could go out and play and somebody could be watching them play. They could be hurt on a glass bottle that broke because it fell from three stories up or was thrown from three stories up. I just, I ask that you truly think about your decision. And I just want to reiterate, if the apartment complex goes in, it's not a, if it was there before we bought our house, we wouldn't have bought there. We would have tried to look somewhere else in Stillwater. That being said, I also teach and coach in Stillwater. And driving a school bus is not a fun thing to do with a bunch of kids after a game. Sometimes we get back eight, nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night. And while some of those college students might not be driving at the normal times, at eight, nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night when they're going home or when friends are starting to go over to their apartments, that's when I'm returning with a bus full of wrestlers from a wrestling event in Ponca or Perry or Tulsa. And we come down that road to return to the junior high, which the junior high is less than a mile away. And all the traffic of that, of driving school buses through that, whether during the daytime or at night, is a scary feeling for me driving a bus full of kids. Thank you for your time.
And then the last request is from Brian Frainer. Mr. Frainer is saying that you are requesting additional time. Do you know how much time you'd be requesting?
I'm looking at absolute tops twelve minutes, but I'll make it quick. I have a number of slides to get through, but I'll try to speed through it as quickly as I can.
Counsel, are you guys good with twelveish?
I appreciate it. Thank you. I have a PowerPoint presentation. I just want to make sure, can I, am I free to pull it up? Well, good evening. Thank you all for taking the time to hear us. So, yeah, I'm a, I'm a professor at the university as well. I'm a professional who's moved to this community. I say that because in a lot of these discussions, a point keeps, points made by various folks that, that our neighborhood is, is just another rental neighborhood, but in fact, it's not. As I think all these voices testify, this is a community of professionals, of families, people just like all of us trying to get by in life. It's not a rental community. But I'm here tonight, I've been the past president of the Lakeview Ridge Homeowners' Association. As Bridgette said, we have worked from day one to try to have a clean, safe community, and we worked our butts off to do that. It's not easy to do. I'm here tonight because our current president couldn't be here. He's out of town. But as was stated, or as my slide shows anyway, seventy-four percent of the residents oppose rezoning. You know, you have those city maps up there, but they're deceptive. I think that a lot of those city maps, they hide as much as they reveal, and they don't reveal the faces that you've seen tonight, as well as some other information I'm going to show you here. This entire effort to rezone has raised some disturbing but unanswered questions. You know, why has no one considered the costs of this high-density housing on the lives of the existing residents? As I mentioned, this is a community of single families and professionals just trying to get by. I've lived here for seven years. Gina's lived here for ten years. Bridgette's lived here for eight years. Why has the burden of demonstrating the problems with this proposed rezoning been placed on the develop, on the backs of the existing residents? Why haven't the developers had to present evidence or arguments why this is a good thing for us or for the community as a whole? No one working for the city has also, has presented that view as well. So I'd like to present you with some evidence tonight because one thing that we were asked to do was to show up with arguments and evidence. And I want to show you a lot of evidence that I got from you, from the city, just right over here, fifty feet down the hall. I went to the, to the police department and asked for some statistics, and I'll go through all those statistics with you. So one other point I want to make is, it's been really frustrating, is that everybody involved with this seems to think they know what's best. They seem to think that, that by creating a multifamily zoning here, that that's in fact best for us and that all these uses that were listed, you know, we could have allied construction, the recycling center. Well, heck, we have all that right now. It's two blocks up the road, just north of Aspen Heights. We have all that activity. As many people stated, we, we like the industrial zoning because it's quiet. Businesses close at five o'clock, and there's not round-the-clock traffic coming in and out, people up all hours of the night. So we like that and we support it. And as Gina said, we are asking that Mercury be the southernmost edge of the multifamily zoning. So we, you know, we over time have built a relationship with the existing owner, Mr. Kearns. We've, we've talked with him, we've cooperated with him, and we like the fact that he's there. We're, in fact, we're sad that he's leaving. So, you know, he's been a good neighbor despite, despite some of the impacts of industrial activity. Overall, it's been, he's been a good neighbor. So one of the points that we, that I want to kind of draw home, when I say that your maps kind of hide as much as they reveal, I mean, to me, this is significantly more than fifty percent. When you look at land mass alone, we even have commercial developers, Tag Petroleum and the apartment complex at the end there, they oppose this, and you have their signatures in the paperwork we submitted. So I want, one point that I want to be clear though, to make, is that in addition to these costs that I'll delineate here, we are not opposed to progress. We're not opposed to economic growth by any means. What we're asking is that this growth be smart growth, and we don't feel that this is smart growth for a number of the reasons that I'm going to delineate here. So the point was made that there are adequate roads to support these thousands of cars that are going to be traveling through this area. Far from the case, according to the City of Stillwater's police statistics. So there's three ways to get out of this neighborhood in your car, okay? The first is at Perkins Road and Mercury Avenue. So I pulled up the, had the police pull up the statistics. I'll give you all this data if you want it. Thirty-eight injuries, there's a street light right at that little T there. You, you know, thirty-eight injuries, you think, well, shoot, you know, jeez, I'm glad it's not my kid, but that's not too bad, right? And there is a street light there after all, so no harm, no foul accidents happen. But that's one, that's one of two. We know that all this traffic is going to Oklahoma State University, so it's all going to flow southward to Lakeview and Perkins. You look a little further at the statistics, and now we see there's a hundred and eighty-two injuries that have occurred. That's where all the traffic's going to be bottlenecking from the three outlets of this neighborhood, and I've only talked about one so far. Well, what's another possible outlet? Oh, and before I move on to the second outlet, when traffic backs, backs up at Lakeview and Perkins, what's going to happen is it's going to filter through this neighborhood to the, to the west, Liberty and Star. So we know this is going to happen. With, with that many cars flowing through this area, this residential neighborhood is going to be overrun with traffic, and that's just one of the nearby neighborhoods it's going to change. So the next way to get out of this neighborhood, if you're really cunning and you want to get around all this traffic at Lakeview and Perkins, you'd go up to Airport and Perkins. But at the risk of your own life, because there, there's been three deaths and two-hundred-and-fifty-seven injuries. Again, City of Stillwater Police Statistics. This is one of the most dangerous intersections in town. If you're, I've seen three accidents there on my way to Tulsa, just me alone. Three people have actually died. There is no street light there. What are the costs of putting in a street light? For, for, you know, these developers keep talking about all the economic progress they're bringing to town. Well, who's going to pay for these streetlights? Who's going to pay for widening the road if we need to do that? Well, the taxpayers are. But let's take a look at the most logical way to get out of this neighborhood. If you want to avoid the light, it's at Marine and Lakeview. Well, there, we'll, we have four, the, the death toll starts to climb. Four deaths and twelve injuries, okay? So why is that? Well, number one, there's no street light, so there's more costs that the city's going to have to incur, okay? What can they do to avoid that death trap of an intersection? Well, they can go right through our neighborhood, Lauren and Emma Lane. So they're going to be flying through our traffic, and by the way, it was through our neighborhood, it was said that there's no traffic problem or parking problem in our neighborhood. I live there, and let me tell you, there is a parking problem in our neighborhood. When there are cars lined on each side of the street, only one car is able to navigate its way through there. Two cars will not fit, okay? And there are plenty of times when you have folks with guests over, traffic gets piled up on the street, okay? So cars are going to be driving through here at a greater number, and they're going to be going smack dab into this bus stop. The other lady just mentioned has been moved. So there's little kids walking on these streets at, at the risk of now dodging multiple thousands of cars. So when you add it all up, we have seven deaths and three-hundred-and-eighty-nine injuries, okay? So if you think that's adequate, then, you know, that's a decision you'll have to come to, but I don't, and I don't want to add to the death toll or the injury toll. So when we talk about the costs to Stillwater, we're talking about living, breathing people, okay? There are significant costs that are involved here. You know, why, why do I throw this up? Well, I ask, you know, if anybody recognizes it. Well, a lot of these folks who are interested in developing this area haven't actually come out to our neighborhood. If they did, they would see it is no surprise, right at the corner of Lakeview and Marine, it's where two people were killed, okay? This cross marks the site, and you don't have to be a genius to figure out why they were killed. Just take a look at the photo. When you look to your left, when you're coming out of the place where all this development would be, you can see the telephone poles start to disappear behind the ridge. The reason that people are getting killed is because there's not enough distance between the top of that ridge and the outlet of Marine, right? So that's why the death toll's highest there. It doesn't take a rocket science, a scientist to figure that out. So I ask, how far, this is this little speed, there's a little speed limit sign there. How far do you think it is to that? How far do you think it is to that speed limit sign? Nobody knows, nobody knows, right? Nobody knows, we just know this is all a good thing. Well, I know, because I did my homework. I got out there with a tape measure, and I measured it. It's 360 feet. If I tailgated a car at that distance, at 40 miles an hour, I'd get a ticket. But we have, we're going to have thousands of cars pouring out into this street. So we could, you know, we could smack dab put up a telephone or a street light, solve the problem, right? Or we could level, level this road so that it's actually viewable, but again, what are the costs that are incurred to the citizens of Stillwater? So it's 360 feet, and again, don't let me lie to you here. You can see the telephone poles disappearing, and you can see the car disappearing the minute it gets past the speed limit sign. It's obviously a dangerous situation. It's a recipe for disaster when you add these thousands of cars into this neighborhood. So this is a car coming on. All you have to do is turn around. There's the cross, and there's the truck. By the way, that's an allied waste truck. We already have allied waste in the area. And if you take a look at this next photo, you can see the allied waste emblem on the truck there, and I just, in the five minutes that I was standing there, two trucks went right by each other, and you can see how they block each other's view. You can't see anything if one truck's sitting next to another one, and I can't even see the house that's on the other side of it. So there are significant costs here, okay? Real-world costs in terms of infrastructure. Who's paying this? I haven't heard anyone else step up to the plate to say they were going to pay for it. There are also costs in terms of public safety. How do I know this? Well, I did my homework. I went over to the city, the police department, and they gave me all the dispatches of the last 14 months. The police have been sent out to Lauren, Benjamin, and Emma Lane 137 times in 14 months. That's once every three days, the police are coming out to our neighborhood, okay? So now we're talking about adding potentially 750 in Aspen Heights, and then 330 with this new development, 1,080 developments with multiple thousand people. How much more do you think these police dispatches are going to escalate? What does it cost to send the police to our neighborhood, or even out once? What are the taxpayers paying? Do we need more police officers? And who's going to pay for it? So nobody wants to have that conversation. And so you might ask, why are the police coming out to this neighborhood all the time? You know, is it parking tickets? Well, I did a little more homework, right? And if you just take a look at the slide, these are not petty crimes that are occurring here. Shots fired, loud music. How much do you think that's going to escalate and change the character of the neighborhood? Drug contraband, domestic violence, burglary, loud noise, music. How much music do you think several thousand people are going to put? You know, I don't want to sit here and read the slide to you, but you can see parking complaints up there as well, and I'm just, these are not isolated incidents. I'm summarizing the 137 violations for you. So there are significant costs that are incurred. Who's going to pay for roads, streetlights, water? The other important point that needs to be made about water development, and that your maps really hide rather than reveal, is if you take a look over here, my little pointer won't show it, but there's actually two drainage, two drainage canals coming through our neighborhood. The first one is to the left, the residential area to the left, just south of Mr. Kearns' industrial activity. The other one is in the other development, just north of the water retention pond. There's a huge, large retention pond that has overflowed with water when it floods. These two drainage paths are going to increase with water when this area is covered with blacktop and concrete. So, but I guess we were told, though, that water drainage will be handled according to city regulations, whatever that means. I don't know what that means, but God bless us all if it doesn't work. So when you go back and you look, this is a vantage point of our neighborhood from Mr. Kearns' property. What you can see is that significant dumping has taken place there. There's a lot of dirt that's been piled there. Don't let me lie to you, just take a look at these photos. You can see the fresh dirt there, you see the trucks in the background. The elevation has been completely altered. I would imagine this is going to affect water drainage as well, right? And I'll just buzz through these slides, but you can see, this is me standing on the road, you can see the elevation there, you can see the trucks, you can see the activity taking place, okay? So again, I just want to emphasize that we are not against progress. We believe in growth, we want the growth to be smart, and we don't want it to be at our expense, and I'm about to wrap up here, but I have some important information I need to share with you. So this is an intrusive development. If you take a look at the top slide there, you can see that according to code alone, these developments are going to tower over people's houses. Even at 75 foot, if you follow the lines, at 75 foot, the second and third floors can see into the backs of all these houses. And so even, let's say according to the covenants that they filed, the developers filed, they said, well, how about 40 foot? We'll set it at 40 foot. If you look at the third image, that's the proposed 40-foot setback. So that's a best-case scenario. And we can see that the second and third floors still are able to peer into the backs of these houses. Would you want your kids playing out in these backyards with all these people peering in to the backs of their houses so that our neighborhood ends up looking like this? We all know, we all know what this is. This is this public planning disaster that exists behind the Walmart over here on Country Club and 51. Look at what a monstrosity this is. All, it's very obvious. All you have to do is use your eyes to see that these people's property value, there's a for-sale sign in the yard right there, I didn't put it there, right? There's a for-sale sign in the yard. My neighbor, my coworker who lives in the neighborhood said that every one of these houses went up for sale the minute this thing started getting built, and they've turned it into a rental neighborhood, okay? And I'm going to buzz through these slides right here, because again, it's been proposed by the developer, well, they'll build, they'll put trees up. They'll put trees up, and that'll solve the problem. Well, trees, as we can see here in the slide, they lose their leaves in the fall and winter, and even this tree in the backyard doesn't obstruct anything. This tree, you can see, I can see into their window as easily as they can see down onto the ground floor. So you get the point. This is no solution. This is not a gradual phased zoning plan here. This is an abrupt transition that we're asking you to vote against. And again, I just have to stop on this one, because I really think it's just a monstrosity. You know, and I'll go ahead and wrap up. Again, I want to just ask you all to vote against this. This is a disaster. The real costs that are being incurred are being incurred at our expense and by the taxpayers of Stillwater, okay? Not by the people doing this development. By the way, I just wanted to ask you if you could guess how far this development is from the fence line? It's 40 feet. 40 feet, exactly what, as specific as they've gotten with us, this is what they've said that they would do. And tonight, actually, I heard something different. Tonight, it sounded like 11 foot plus three foot for each additional story is what I heard tonight. Well, we were told 40 foot, but that's 40 foot, and that has created a public planning disaster. So wrapping up then, you know, all of our grandparents told us that if it sounds too good to be true, it's probably not true. There are no free lunches. Well, the people of Stillwater are going to bear the cost of this growth in terms of their lives, public safety, infrastructure. We ask that you vote against this rezoning property from industrial general to residential multifamily. We ask that you draw the line at Mercury, that being the southernmost area of multifamily. And we ask that you also give us the opportunity to respond if anybody rebuts any of these points we made. Before you cast your final vote, we'd like to have an opportunity to rebut them. Thank you.
Mr. Frainer, there were a couple of questions.
Sure, sure.
Did I understand you to say that, are you speaking for the homeowners association or just yourself?
The homeowners association.
Are you saying you think industrial general is a lower use than the multifamily?
What do you mean by lower use? What do you mean?
Less intrusive, less invasive?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it is. It is, it has been entirely non-invasive at this point.
I mean, it's not in use now, but you realize a trucking company should come in tomorrow, and 18-wheelers could be rolling in and out of there all day and night, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, sure.
Right? The owner could go put a trucking facility.
Yeah, that's right. And, you know, and I think, I guess we're having to say that we're willing to gamble that that's the case, right? If somebody, if somebody wants to do that, I mean, you know, this, to me, has become a scare tactic, right?
Well, it is owned in industrial general.
Right, right.
I write the owner could use it for that purpose because he owns it, right?
Correct.
And so this is a zoning request. They're asking you to change the zone.
I understand that.
And so what I'm hearing from you is you want to maintain the current zoning.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. Other questions?
Ideally, Gina's point about changing it to single-family would be best. The point has been made that this property has been sandwiched between multifamily.
I get it, but the problem is.
Well, can I just finish this, can I just finish this point? Is that we've been, we've been mis-zoned. We've been mis-zoned. We're single-family residences, and so we're not multifamily residences. So that's in error. And so the sandwiching that has occurred has, is, you know, something that's been in place over time. These considerations should have been made, frankly, before Aspen Heights went into effect.
That's your point, but you understand that someone else owns that property, and you're suggesting what his property should be zoned. Right? So that's the point.
I'm, yes, I think, just, I want to be clear about answering your question. We would rather have it left as industrial than changed to multifamily. Yes.
Okay. I had a question on some of your stats. I just want to make sure I understood the point you were trying to make, or really did the scope of the point you were trying to make. When you said that there were 137 police calls in the last 14 months, was that in your neighborhood in a certain geographic area? Where were those calls?
It was in our neighborhood, on the blocks of Emma, Lauren, and Benjamin in our neighborhood, directly south of the area that's under consideration.
Okay.
Just those alone. I didn't go to the next tract over, there would have been more.
The U on the west.
The U on the west, right. It excludes that.
Okay.
You have statistics on how many of the houses in your development are rental property versus, I know everybody owns them, but how much is rented?
We, I don't have the exact numbers offhand. We have, it's a difficult question to answer because people will, who live there, will rent. They may leave for various reasons, rent for a year or two, and return and take up permanent residence. So this idea of what constitutes a rental property is not clear. We know this because we have to constantly communicate with people to get dues for the homeowners association. I mean, I would guess that maybe one in three, maybe, is our rentals.
Any other questions right now? And yes, you can have, there can be rebuttal time, yes.
I was just curious, I mean, may I ask what, how that would influence how you see the situation?
Well, you know, it seems to be, and this is just a generalization that I'm making somewhat like it's been made, but when you have property that's been bought and it was low-income when it was developed, and I'm familiar with some of the development people and who sold the property from original, that a lot of it was being sold for rental property, and that college students were using that. Some of them were parents bought it, others were just buying because of low cost, you can rent the bedrooms out at X amount of dollars, and so property in that area was being bought for rental purposes. And so I was just curious, you know, and I appreciate the fact you have a homeowners association, I really do, and that you're trying to make that. But I was just curious about how many now, you were talking about streets being parked, you know, cars in your neighborhood being parked that way. I was just curious about who was doing all the parking.
Yeah.
And you don't have to answer me, I'll just, but the number, where I'm coming with my deal, the number of individuals that are already being rented out.
Yeah, and so I said about one in three, about 30%. So that could account for a lot of cars, you know, if it was one in three. But you saw the people here tonight. I got the guy sitting next to me, he's my neighbor, he has his little baby, dragged her out of bed. She's not a renter. They're residents, living, breathing people, just like you. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have, both sides have requested rebuttal time, and so, Mr. Ghost, do you have anything else to add?
I can answer Mr. Hopkins, Councilor Hopkins' question. Lakeview Ridge, the first section, it's, we've identified 38 rentals, 38 resident homeowner type. The others are, you know, their tax bill's sent somewhere else, or those kind of issues. And it appears that the neighborhood, the U-shaped neighborhood's about the same, or we feel it's about 50/50, so. The other stuff I'm not going to respond to. You got any questions after this? For us?
Any questions raised?
Thank you.
Mr. Frainer.
So if he's right about that, if it's closer to 50% than 30%, all the more reason not to have more traffic flowing through this area, right? And so, and the other, I don't really even know what that has to do with this issue, to be quite honest. The other point that I'd make, though, is that even if it's 50%, there's 50% of people who are homeowners, and the points that I've made are no less valid because there happens to be 50% of the people renting the house. Makes no difference to this point whatsoever.
Can I say something, just on the U-shaped neighborhood?
If you want to rebuttal, please come forward. Again, state your name again for us, so we got.
Kyle Lucas, and I live at 802 East Lauren Lane. It is the furthest northwest home in the U-shaped section. By my wife and I's count, just real quickly off the top of our head, we know of about five rental homes in our neighborhood. I think there's nine to 11 homes on the north side of the street, and every single one of those is owned by a family except for one. And those are the homes that are most affected with the apartment complex going 11 feet off of our back fence, or 40 feet, whatever, whatever's destined. And so we think that there's only about five in our neighborhood, and then even of those renters, some that are college students have come to support the proposed rezoning. And we got signatures from some of those, as well as a lot of those that are being rented in our neighborhood, especially on our side of the street, they are rented by families whose kids still go to Stillwater Public Schools.
Ms. Evans?
At its regular meeting on January 15, 2013, the Planning Commission's vote resulted in a tie. Therefore, no recommendation has been sent to the council due to concerns of traffic, setbacks from adjacent properties to the south, and protection of investments. Are there any questions?
Do you have any questions for Ms. Evans? Councilwoman.
Yeah, industrial general was the setback on that.
It's a side yard setback because it is a corner property, so it would be five feet plus three feet for each additional story.
For industrial general.
So it would be 11 feet. If it's a three-story building, 11 feet.
Industrial general, that's the setback.
Oh, industrial general?
Yes.
I'm sorry. With the residential district adjacent to it, it is 75 feet.
Is there a height requirement in IG?
No, there isn't.
I saw no maximum.
No maximum limit.
I'm reading the IG right now.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from Ms. Evans right now? We may be calling back for you.
Okay.
All right. Counsel, we've got a rezoning request, which means it's the current zoning classifications and just current zoning classification rules. That is the question. Not what will they do, not what can someone promise to do, but what does the current zoning rule say? And, you know, we've been, I mean, they spelled out, I've got RTM here in front of us, and when we look at rezone, I know the way I looked at it is, what is the current? What is the proposed? And look at the differences, and what could go into either one? Not what someone says they might, but what could. So I just wanted to throw that out at first and... So I just wanted to throw that out at first, and discussion time. I'm just looking around.
On the IG, as it stands now, from the fence line on Lauren, it's 75 feet, did I get that correct?
Yes.
But the height, you put anything up there to include some kind of tower or something, there's no maximum on the height. 100 feet, no. Okay. Whereas an ITM, it's anywhere between 11 and 40, I don't, let's say 11, and it can only be three stories?
35 feet.
35 feet. Okay, 35 feet. My, my comment has to do with the fact that, that we've increased the planning commission and that we've charged them, and we asked them to look over everything and bring recommendations back to this council of what they feel that would be the correct zoning for areas. And they voted twice, as I understand, and looking at this, and both times it failed. It's a three to three vote, which they brought, asked the staff to bring it to us without any recommendations. I have said since I've been on this council that 99 percent of the time I always follow the planning commission's recommendations because they're the experts that we put there to help us solve the problems that we're facing. And, and they didn't come to us with anything clear on that, except not to bring to us the staff's recommendation that this project be rezoned to, to the current classifications being requested. So it causes me some problems in doing the vote, I'll be truthful with you. And I would have liked to have had a clear-cut definition, but they were not satisfied with, and they presented the elements of what they're not happy with. And so I'm paying a lot of respect to their wishes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, would you please request staff to return to the podium and read verbatim what the planning commission's recommend, or what their comments was one more time?
Sure. Patty, I mean, do you have the minutes?
What, what you read previously will suffice.
Uh, you want me to read their rec, their recommendation? Okay.
Or lack thereof.
They had no recommendation for the council due to concerns of traffic setbacks from adjacent properties to the south and protection of investment.
Thank you, ma'am.
And when I read the minutes for the planning commission meeting, had the normal public hearing and comments on both sides, and after discussion, a motion was made to recommend not approving, and the vote was three-three. So that motion to recommend not to approve didn't pass, and then they turned around and offered the opposite, a motion to recommend to approve, and it also, along, along party lines, same people voting, voted the same, is, is that, that's how planning commission voted?
I believe so, yes. It, it was a tie on both motions.
Any other questions, Ms. Evans? Thank you. Do I have any other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
You know, this feels a lot like the Primrose deal, where we were asked to do a rezoning with houses built around, around the Pecan Hill area. We passed that action. I voted no for it, because I was concerned about the property owners that were going to be abutting the property. And they came to us, much like a lot of these folks have done, and said, "Look, I bought a house here," based on that being the zoning that it was. These people are basically coming in and doing the same thing, even though they're wanting it to stay industrial general, which is a lot different, but still, they bought their properties with that assumption. And, you know, I know the, the, the properties going up behind the Holiday Inn, I've driven out there and I've seen that, and if I'd had a chance to vote against that, I would have. So, I mean, thi- this feels like that, in my view.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, come off of Council Weaver's point, the reason that I had requested staff to read through their, their definition again, if I may quote it, they're, they had no recommendation based on setbacks, traffic, and investments. The, the presentation that was made tonight by the homeowners association, that is what I derived from their presentation, was setbacks, traffic, and investments. And though the planning commission did not necessarily say no, I'm reminded of Aspen Heights round one, when the neighborhood came out and said, "Traffic, safety, security, privacy," and Aspen Heights found a secondary location. I don't know that this developer can do that, but as much as I hate to, to nix any, I, I respect smart development versus any development, but as much as I hate to nix any, any project, to answer the mayor's question in terms of, we're talking about zoning, hearing what the residents have, what they prefer, you can argue, owner, homeowner, renter, they, they went through the steps and they've, they've made it pretty clear that they don't want it. For me personally, that's, that's about where I stand on it.
Well, the question of rent or own, that's irrelevant.
It's irrelevant. I, I moved, but that was what I was trying to say.
The, how we got to where we are, I find very interesting, in that, and I, I did not go back, and I don't know if we have access to it quickly, the, the current, the, the Lakeview Ridge, the neighborhood, is bordered by commercial and industrial general and industrial, industrial general to city limits functionally. What, what was this property prior to being rezoned to RTM so they could get the density? Do we know that? And I have a point with that question, so.
I did look up the history of the zoning on this Lakeview Ridge. Prior to 2009, I'm sorry, 1999, it was RS3, which is a single-family type residential. In 1999, the owners of the property requested it be changed to RM2, which was one of our multifamily residential zoning districts at that time. When we did our land development code in 2008, adopted that, we did away with all those RM1, RM2, RM3, and just had the one zoning district. So we changed all those RM1, 2, and 3 to just RM.
Okay.
Okay? Now we've gone back to four or three multifamily zoning districts, so we had to look at, at that again and see what, which of those multifamily zoning districts would fit, it would fit into, and we gave it the lowest density multifamily district, which is the RTM.
So is it, here's RM, I apologize.
So it was, it was RS2, then it was RM2, then it was RM, now it's RTM. So it has been multifamily since 1999.
From the, from the get-go of development. When, when the plat was filed, it was a residential multifamily zoning.
Yes.
I understand that's not what was built and not how it's used, I get that, and that's, and...
And at that time, our code allowed single-family homes in the multifamily residential zoning districts, and that's how they got...
The structure, yes.
Yes.
Is there a duplex up there?
I believe they're all single families, yeah.
I, I drove the entire neighborhood multiple times. I spent about 30 minutes out there over the weekend, and, yeah, they're, they're, I mean, it's all single family. I mean, the structures.
There's no motion before the House?
There's no motion.
The point, there's no motion on the floor. No recommendation, no motion.
Mr. Mayor, what is our alternative, if I may? Where does that leave us?
Leaves you where you can make a motion if some, if one of the members chooses to do so.
Mr. Mayor, are you looking for a motion at this time, while we still discuss?
If there wants, I mean, if people have more to discuss, if someone would like to make a motion, we're always free to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, based on what I've heard in discussion and discourse from the council, I would move to reject the recommend, or I would move to not change the zoning to RTM.
There's a, a motion, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
And we can still discuss, which... All right, Council Scott, you made the, the motion, what...
It is always difficult when you're, you're trying to grow a city. It's always difficult. I respect the idea of smart growth, and definitely, I, I don't know the timetable on your statistics in terms of deaths at intersections, injuries at intersections. I don't know the timetable. If that's in a year, that's impressive. If that's in 10 years, that's impressive, and it's definitely something that needs to be looked at. I think the planning commission saw the same thing. Student housing is something that is important, growing the amount of citizens in Stillwater. I know there's just, there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of good things that can come from a development like this. But unfortunately, as I feel that has been demonstrated tonight, equally, there are bad things that can come from it. And I feel very proud to have been a part of the council when we first dealt with Aspen Heights, and we listened to the neighborhood, they got organized, they came out, they made their case, and, and we voted it down, and, and Aspen Heights went somewhere else. Based on everything that I have heard, I don't, I don't know any other decision that I personally can make. I, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I can say for me personally, I would not support changing the zoning at this time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, anything I'd like to say?
I'm in a dilemma here, simply because I look at the planning commission, no recommendation, I've heard the pros, I've heard the cons. I can't tell you what's going to go in there if we say, "Let's rezone." I can't tell you what's going to go in there if we say, "Let's not rezone." So I'm in that up and down position where...
Me, my thought...
Very difficult decision to make, especially since the planning commission has not given me any help in this.
My thought is, the representative from the, from the homeowners association, I'll just kind of pick on him, he was asked directly from this council, Council Weaver, you realize they could put the loudest possible development for industrial back there. Mr. Kern said they could start at 3:00 AM. The homeowners association said they don't mind. I respect that.
I also said for the rec, ideally, it shouldn't be single family.
We can't get into that one.
I have a fundamental problem with the ribbons of zoning that we have in place. Going, single-family, multifamily, even though it's used as single-family, I'm going from south to north here, going up the map. South of Lakeview, we've got a single-family neighborhood. Right now, there's a vacant area that's got, I think it's RT in that vacant area. We hit Lakeview, we jump across the street, and I, I agree that the zoning doesn't match the use, but, single-family, then we jump to industrial general. Then we go to multifamily, then we go to industrial general again, and I understand the multifamily, that Aspen Heights is a recent. But I, I, ribbons of zoning changes, especially that drastic, is not good. The concerns, and this, this isn't just this project, this rezone application, but any rezone application, the, and this is one of those, and it is the most frustrating thing to me about this job, is that the difference between a rezone, a PUD, and a building permit, because everything gets mushed together in people's minds. But the, we can only do part of it, even though it's all bound up in people's thinking. In any development, the infrastructure impact, the traffic impact, the stormwater impact, all of those, that's not part of a zoning question, that is the next stage with our building permit question. And we've got the standards in place that regardless of whatever it's zoned, before it can be built, it's got to meet those highs, those standards. One of the comments made, and this isn't so much having to do with this, this, this application, but our standards are, and it has to do with who's going to pay for things, that, that, that line of thought, developer has to pay to cure the problems. If the traffic study says roads need to be widened or streetlights need to be added before building permits will be issued, if the developer wants a building permit, they're paying to make the improvements. So on that point, that's just a bigger picture thought.
I certainly respect that sentiment, Mr. Mayor, I hadn't considered that. But I do, I do stand by my motion.
Any, any other comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. President, do you have something?
Just whenever you get ready to vote, I just wanted to clarify the motion and what the yes vote would signify.
Any other comments? Okay.
The motion that we have is to reject the request to rezone the subject property to RTM from its present IG classification, so a yes vote would be to deny the application.
Any questions on that? Come on. You guys know the motion. Time to vote.
Yes, sir. Motion fails.
Planning rules would require that they get a majority, so having gotten only two votes, the motion would fail regardless of the abstention.
Time? The motion to deny fails, so we're still sitting here with the question. Does anyone wish to make a different motion?
We don't have the luxury of doing what the planning commission did.
Do you care to make a motion that you vote for?
Let me think about it for a second.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't, with respect to procedure, maybe I'm incorrect, but I, I would, I would make my motion...
make my motion a second time to reject the, changing the zoning again.
That would require a motion to reconsider, since that would be on the, you could make a different motion, you could make the opposite motion, like the Planning Commission did, which was to approve the request and then vote on that.
Or you could make the motion to reconsider.
Make a motion to reconsider and go to the-
And would the proper procedure be you'd vote on the motion to reconsider, which isn't voting on the real question-
And then-
But it's voting to say, gosh, do you want a do-over? Is that-
Yes, sir, that's how I do it.
Okay.
Motion to reconsider.
We have a motion to reconsider, is there a second on the motion to reconsider?
I will second Councilor Weaver's motion to reconsider.
Okay. And a yes vote on this means we're gonna reconsider, right?
To vote again.
All right. Okay, that motion passes to reconsider.
Okay, that one didn't fail.
Okay, square one.
Come on back now. Well, if I may, I guess I, I made the first motion. I feel that the neighborhoods have made a case. They've got their statistics, they've got their neighbors together, they've, they've stated their case pretty clearly. I definitely respect where they're coming from. And with everything I've heard tonight, I appreciate the owners and developers being here with what I've heard tonight. We reconsider and we can go on. Yes, sir.
Can I, can I, I don't mean to interrupt the council, but is there a way that I can see what the vote was before? It was two noes, two yeses, and abstain. Can I see that again, please? Is that possible?
She could read the vote back to you, though.
Um, there were two noes, uh, Councilor Scott and Councilor Weaver. One abstention was Mr. Penn, and then the two, uh, yes votes were Mayor Bartley and Vice-
Actually, it's the other way around.
Yeah.
Do it again, please.
The other way around, two noes were-
Were, uh, Mayor Bartley and Vice-
So the motion on the floor is?
There is no motion yet.
There is no motion yet at this time, sir.
You made the motion to reconsider.
I did.
And you seconded it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that implies you wanna make a motion.
I'll make a motion to reject having the zoning changed from IG to RTM.
Second. Mr. Dorman. Functionally the same motion, so is your statement still the same on what a yes vote means and what a no vote means?
A yes vote will be to deny the application.
Okay. Motion and a second, is there any further discussion on this? Ah, it's a waste of time. Anybody else wanna make a motion?
I think we're stuck on high center here.
Well, no, no, we're not. But we're gonna find out if we are.
Okay.
I will use my prerogative, and I'm going to make a motion to approve the application. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
There's a second. Is there any discussion on this app, on this motion? Let's vote.
So just to clarify for everybody, a yes vote will be to approve the application, correct? Okay, so you'll be voting to approve it if you vote yes.
Okay. Motion to approve is denied. One to four. Don't make it easy, I was the one yes vote. Vice Mayor, you're a parliamentary expert.
What do you wanna know?
That I should've paid more attention to parliamentary procedure class.
I will second that, Mr. Mayor, I should've too.
Parliamentary-wise, it's over now.
According to what I learned about voting, an abstention is a no vote. According to city code, city management code, or, or the stuff that controls us, if you get an abstention, it's supposed to go on record as a no vote.
And it would normally, except in, in the planning rules, the way we have it set up is that if you abstain and it results in a tie, you don't have enough votes to deny the application. So you can't, you could, if you had voted it up, if you had done it the way you've just voted, where you, the motion was to approve, you couldn't negatively approve it by having an abstention out there as well. So that's part of the problem. But you fixed it with your last vote, so it's over.
Okay. All right. That is over. It's not rezoned, it's, it's IG. All right. I've lost my agenda. Tell you what, with Counselors' permission, if we could take a five-minute recess, I don't think the majority of the room wants to stick around for anything else tonight, but I'm, I don't wanna be presumptuous. So we'll take a five-minute recess.
It does get a little more boring from here.
Dust and debris away from your van, uh, your furnace, so that you don't have a lot of combustibles around there. And make sure also that your furnace is, is well-vented. If you have any questions, what you should do is talk to a professional, because they're the ones that can check out your ducts, and they can check out your furnace, and you should have your furnace checked periodically anyway. One of the big things is that you should change the filters out, and that's relatively easy. Some furnaces have the filters in the ducting system as compared to by the filter, by the furnace itself. So those are some of the things that you need to look for and tend to. Well, your fireplace is, um, over the years, if you are burning wood that has a lot of creosote in it, or, uh, resins, it can coat the inside of your chimney, and if it gets hot enough, those will ignite. So what you want to do is, is you wanna make sure that you have somebody like a chimney sweep come in and clean the chimney out and check it and make sure that it's okay. The big thing is to make sure that your fireplace vents properly, that you do not have any leaks that could cause problems in the house. And you also need to make sure that you have your, the chimney itself is free of resins and creosote. Well, there's a lot of things that you can do on the outside, just on a daily basis. You need to rake the leaves and the debris away from the edges of the house. What I like to do is take some bug spray and spray all around the perimeter of the house, because it gets towards winter and it gets colder, bugs that winter over will try to get in the house because it's warmer. So that's one of the things. The other thing that you can do is you can check for any damaged windows, make sure that your windows are, are sealable, and that any of the, uh, the molding that is around the windows and the doors is properly sealed, your, your, keeps the wind out. The other thing is, is make sure that you store your wood in a place that is away from the house, that's well-vented, so that you don't have a possibility of termites and infestation of that type of nature. It's a good idea to find your shut-off valve for your water, know where it is, because if you have a break in your line because of freezing or otherwise, uh, if you don't know where it is, then it becomes a problem trying to find it. Always know that the city can help you as far as that goes, you can talk to them, and someone can come out and help. But before that accident occurs, find out where it is so that you can readily shut it off if you need to service a line. Another thing is, is vacations. If you go on holiday vacations, set your temperature in the 50s. Don't set it real low, because if it gets freezing outside, then you could break the lines inside in the walls. And that's just the common sense type of things that you need to do. One of the things that we talk about is taking your garden hoses off of the spigots. Those hoses, drain them and store them somewhere that you don't have a, a problem with. If you leave them connected to your faucets and there is water in there and it freezes, then you can end up having a problem and you can break your line, unless it's a self-draining faucet. Just think about, what would I do if I had an emergency, if I had an ice storm here in, in Oklahoma, which we are prone to having? If your power is out, what do you need? Build yourself a 72-hour minimum kit that has some food, has water, has some clothing. Know where all your medical papers are and your personal papers in case you have an emergency that you need to get to them. Because mobile homes and trailers are elevated, you need to make sure that that mobile home is properly strapped down. You need to share it, make sure that it is properly founded on either the support posts or a frame. In the wind, things will buck around and move, so make sure that they're stable. The other thing that you can do is you can go underneath the trailer and all of the exposed lines, you can insulate them. Now, sewer line is a little bit different, but the water lines and any of the other lines, you can insulate those. And then the most important thing, I believe, is to make sure that you have a skirt around the trailer, and that that skirt is, uh, done in such a way that you seal off the blowing wind, because as the wind passes underneath the trailer, then what happens is you drop the temperature and you draw heat from the house. So you're, you're, what you're doing by securing it is you're making things more efficient.
Located at 807 South Perkins Road, the Convenience Collection Center provides area residents with convenient, professional staff, drive-through service for disposing of non-hazardous recyclable goods, household waste, and green waste. Items that can be recycled will be accepted free of charge. They include aluminum, automobile batteries, electronic equipment, glass containers, grass clippings, paper products, passenger car and truck tires, plastic containers, rechargeable batteries, residential solid waste, tree trimming, scrap metals, steel or tin cans, used antifreeze, used cooking oil, and used motor oil.
I told people five minutes.
The following items will not be accepted.
All right, we'll reconvene from recess, and that takes us to our second public hearing on item B, received public input regarding a request from Alpha Omicron Pi, proposing a portion for right of way.
All right. This item is to, a request to close approximately 203 feet of the alley between Stanley and Gray Street, south of Fourth Avenue. This, uh, this is, the hatched area contains the properties that are adjacent to the portion of the alley requested to be closed, and this is the site for the new sorority, Alpha Omicron Pi. The purple hatched area is the portion of the alley requesting to be closed. The alley was rededicated to the city after the subdivision plat was vacated, but the alley does not go all the way up to Fourth, as you can see. The alley is, is approximately 13 feet wide. The request is to close the whole width of the alley from this north end here, uh, down to the south property line of 417 South Gray and 417, or 414 South Stanley, then continuing on down for, um, the south on only the east half along property of 424 South Stanley. So only half the alley in this, this area. The alley has an existing electric, electric line, which will be abandoned when the houses are demolished. It will end right here, because this service line does go to the house that will be remaining. And a sewer line that extends from the alley, out of the north end, under that existing house, across Fourth, and then on farther to the north. Water Utilities is planning a sewer project in this area, which will relocate the sewer line from the rear of these lots in this block, but in the meantime, the sewer line will remain in place during the development of the property. Staff recommends that the council approve the request to close a portion of the alley with the following condition, that all utilities located within the portion of the alley to be closed must be relocated or abandoned by the respective utility owners at the expense of Omega Sigma Corporation, or utility usement dedicated by separate instrument for any utility that remains in place. Are there any questions?
Any questions at this point? Do we have good notice?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We do have one request to speak in favor, Josh Powers.
Josh Powers, 113 East Eighth Avenue. I'm here for questions, if you guys have any.
Any questions for Mr. Powers?
Not this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Didn't have anyone signed up to speak against this, so we will close the public hearing. Ms. Evans? Sorry.
Well, I did inadvertently give you the, the, the recommendation. We do recommend approval with the condition, uh, that the utilities be relocated or abandoned, and a utility usement dedicated by separate instrument for any utility that's left in place.
Any questions at this point for staff?
Second.
Okay. Take that as a no question. Motion to approve and a second? That motion passes five to zero. Takes us to our third public hearing, request from Terry Guthrie for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate taxi service.
Okay. Mayor and council members, I have received a, an application from Mr. Terry Guthrie of Ponca City for a taxi cab service license in our city. We have provisions in the code to submit that application to the city manager, verified that all the components required by ordinance have been submitted by Mr. Guthrie. We have the required fee schedule, route information, certificate of insurance, and all information has been verified. He has met all the conditions of being issued a permit to serve taxi cab service in our city. The ordinance also requires that we have a public hearing prior to the council's action on issuing that permit. So that's, that's the status, and, uh, now, subject to public hearing comment.
Okay. Do we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Are, are you Mr. Guthrie?
Yes, I'm Mr. Guthrie. I plan, I wanna come to Stillwater, open my cab service. Right now, I'm running five cabs in Ponca City. I don't plan on bringing drivers from Ponca to Stillwater. That won't work. I'm gonna have to hire local people, people that know the town, and people that has lived here most of their lives. So, you know, I'm gonna have probably nine cab drivers and at least four, maybe five dispatchers throughout the period of, you know, a week. So, you know, my, my, my deal is offering people Stillwater service, being able to get them from point A to point B, you know, as quick as I can, without breaking- A to point B, you know, as quick as I can without breaking any laws, you know. I'm strict on my drivers. I mean, they've got to be clean-cut, they've got to pass all the background checks, and no smoking in the car. It's just common sense. That's what cab driving is, is common sense. I've operated my business for going on four years now, and no accidents, no speeding tickets, and that's really what I want to do here.
Any questions, Mr. Guthrie?
Welcome still.
Thank you. Okay. We did not have any requests to speak against this, so we'll close the public hearing. Recommendation?
In view of the fact that the applicant has met all the conditions and requirements of the code, I see no reason to deny it, so therefore I'd recommend council's issuance of the permit to Mr. Guthrie for his cab service.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Motion passes five to zero. That takes us down to general orders, City of Stillwater Standards Revision. Mr. Neal?
Sir? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. In August of 2011, City Council adopted the City of Stillwater Standards, which are referred to in the city code, pardon me, to be standards for public infrastructure and private, pardon me, stormwater system improvements. With the adoption, council directed that staff receive comments and return with proposed revisions, or revisions as it were, and those revisions are proposed before you tonight. These proposed revisions are the result of lessons learned from use in capital construction projects, from everyday operation of our utilities and transportation systems, from cooperative effort of ongoing dialogue with the development community, including regular meetings with the Stillwater Home Builders Association's Builders Relations Committee. The standards are proposed to you with the primary goal of providing safe and reliable service to our customers today and into the future. And these standards are a living document. They will need to be, they need to be, continue to be revised as we evolve the document, as we identify new issues, pardon me, by, you know, the development community, again, by our operations staff, our engineers. Need to keep evolving it forward. And as we identify those new issues, we will present them to you for adoption. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. How many questions for Mr. Neal?
Not this time, sir.
I would reiterate, based on what Mr. Neal was saying, is that this is not the end-all recommended revisions to the standards. Staff continues to meet with Builders Relations Committee and review these jointly. We are coming forward tonight. The revisions tonight primarily deal with the requirements on the water and the sewer impact on the system. There was some language a little bit too strenuous. It's reviewed that. There are still, there's some other issues that are still being discussed with the staff and Builders Relations Committee regarding some of the stormwater regulations. Those changes are not yet in this version. Those are still under consideration and discussion, and should there be agreements on those changes, they'll come back. As he was saying, it's, the document is dynamic. As we continue to see development, if we find any parts of the standards that are creating an unnecessary burden or hardship on development, we will find ways to modify those to everyone's benefit and bring those back as time allows. But I think this is a good step. These changes have been reviewed by the Builders Relations Committee and staff, and I think this is a good change, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Don't be confused. That was for Mr. Galloway.
Did you give him three or five?
I made you a three. I made you a three.
Actually, I do have one question.
Pardon me, yeah?
In my review of the changes that we're addressing tonight, knowing that there are others, you know, hot topics right now, plus those in the future, knowing those are still coming.
Sure.
Is, what I saw in them was adding flexibility to achieve the real goal, not just, here's the way to do it, go do it, but here's the goal and the flexibility to get there. Is that a fair understanding?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's probably a more succinct way than I would have said it. There are a lot of different ways to...
I don't get, said that to me very often.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, I'm glad we're recording this.
There are a lot of different ways to construct a water line, construct a street in our standards. We work really hard to make sure that we have included in there, all of them that are feasible and we feel are in the best interest of the long-term of the city.
Okay. And with council's permission, I believe that I would speak for the council on this. When revisions are needed or when issues come up, as quickly as they can be brought to council to implement, the better for all.
Yes, sir.
I think that's fair for me to state, so...
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Neal?
Not this time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Since we have a resolution on this here in a minute, we don't need to take any action right now. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Which takes us to resolutions. And the first resolution is CC 2013-2, notifying the public of compiling and publishing the code supplement number two. Mr. Norman?
Just basically what I reported to the council last time, that supplement two to the city code has been published, and there are actually copies available at our office. It's also online now, and you should be able to access that code with ease.
The supplemented is live online?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Please approve. Second.
And that passes five to zero. And our next resolution is CC 2013-3, Resolution Stillwater, City of Stillwater, City Council Adopting Design and Construction Standards.
Please approve on that as well.
That also passes five to zero, which takes us down to ordinances. And on first reading, we have ordinance 3223. Mr. Norman?
An ordinance closing 20 feet of the right-of-way of West Street adjacent to property addressed as 424 West Ninth Avenue.
Questions? Motion?
Move accept ordinance 3223.
Passes five to zero and takes us to ordinance 3220.
On second reading, an ordinance rezoning property addressed as 224 South Washington Street and 223 and 225 South Jefferson Street from RMU Residential Multi-Family District to CB Commercial Business District.
Okay. Any questions on this one?
I'll move approval.
That passes five to zero. And ordinance 3221.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Stillwater by amending Chapter 23 Land Development Code, Article 1, General Provisions, Section 23-7 Definitions, Article 3, Land Development Process, Section 2358, Zoning Map Amendment, Section 2360, Closing of Public Ways and Easements, and Section 2365, Variances, Article 4, Design Principles and Access Management, Section 2385, Lots, Article 5, Use Categories and Limitations, Division 2, Accessory Use Categories and Regulations, Section 23100, Temporary Accessory Structures and Uses Within All Districts Other Than Residential, Article 6, Land Use Classifications, Division 3, Residential Districts, Section 23136, RSL, Large Lot Single Family Residential District, Section 23137, RSS, Small Lot Single Family Residential District, Section 23138, RT, Two-Family Residential District, Section 23139, RTM, Two-Family and Multi-Family District, Section 23140, RMI, Multi-Family Intermediate District, and Section 23141, RMU, Multi-Family Urban District. Division 4, Commercial Districts, Section 23150, O Office District, Section 23151, CS, Commercial Shopping District, and Section 23153, CG, Commercial General District. Division 5, Industrial Districts, Section 23160, IL, Light Industrial District. Article 8, or excuse me, Article 13, Overlay Districts, Section 2, Special Purpose Overlay Districts, Section 23273, Development Standards. Article 14, Commercial Use by Right, Section 23282, Contents of Application Site Plan. Article 15, Planned Unit Developments, Division 2, Development Guidelines, Section 23307, Application Preliminary PUD Plan. Article 17, Required Improvements, Division 2, Administration, Section 23349, Public Improvement Warrant, Division 3, Improvements, Section 23357, Water Distribution System, Section 23358, Sanitary Sewer Collection System, and Section 23360, Alley's.
You can take a drink now.
I have my drink.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval.
We had a motion down here, and then a second. That passes five to zero. And then finally, ordinance 3222.
An ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 11, Electricity, Section 10486, Amendment in regard to the 2011 National Electrical Code.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Counsel Scott.
Second.
Second by Counsel Pena. That passes four to zero, and that takes us down to items from City Attorney.
I have a request for an executive session. I would withdraw that request for this meeting, and I'll bring it back for a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
I did have one short announcement. Governor Fallon's office has notified us that Deputy City, or excuse me, City Prosecutor Dennis McGrath has been reappointed to the Polygraph Examiners Board. And the reason that I mention this to you is that his reappointment is significant because he was first appointed to this in 1986 by Governor George Nye. And according to Governor Fallon's office, he may be the longest-serving appointed official on a state board for commission.
That's pretty impressive. That's pretty impressive. I was wishing he was here. I was going to tell him I didn't know he was that old.
Second, Mayor.
I will convey your message.
With my second.
That's really fun. Okay. Anything else?
That's all, sir.
Okay. Mr. Galloway?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Councilors, do you guys have anything?
I do. One thing I would add, and this might be something I'd get with legal with, I think there were some questions about extensions and what they mean. We might pin that up in our PSAs or something. I'm going to get with legal after, not tonight, but at a later date, and get a little bit more clarification on that, so I don't make that same mistake myself. You know, what does an extension mean, et cetera, et cetera? We might include that in some of our PSAs.
Anybody else on here?
Well, Pena just quit extending, and you won't have a problem.
Good work, Joe, good work.
Anything else? I've got a couple things. On our radio show on 780 AM, Counselor Pena will be on next Tuesday, the 26th. On March 5th will be Counselor Weaver, and March 12th is myself. Also want to reemphasize the kickoff event for the One Community, One Book One Community, Stillwater Reads Woody Guthrie, and next Thursday, so a week from tonight, at seven o'clock at the library is the kickoff event. And that's a, is this our third or fourth year to do a One Community, One Book? It's a great thing, so, anyway. Would really like everyone to participate in that. And then final, I guess, well, another item is Monday, we have a study session for the council. And again, public meeting, it will not be here at City Hall, it'll actually be at Holiday Inn in one of the boardrooms, ballrooms, one of the conference rooms at the Holiday Inn. And we're going to be using this as a visioning and goal session. And the way I envision it, sorry to mesh those words, but is it's the first step. It's not the step, it's a first step for us to be able to sit down and talk and discuss to see what do we see Stillwater in five years, 10 years, three years, just what do we see it? And let's be talking big picture items, not, we want to pave 300 feet of sidewalk this year. Not task list items, but big picture stuff. So, anyway, would invite public to come out, and they can be at that meeting, it's a public meeting. But once again, I see this as multiple times we'll meet in that type of format, so we can be putting together some visions and goals so that city staff knows what we're really thinking. So I think that's fair. So, anyway.
It's somewhat of a, you might call it kind of a mini retreat, and some people say, why are you going to a different site? Well, it's, this is an occasion just to let the five elected officials, it shows all yours, you're going to be sitting at a table, staff's not going to be involved in the conversation. We've invited a neutral, third-party facilitator to come in and lead and coordinate your discussion. But it's all about the five of you, and your visions, your concerns for the future, to begin to bring those all together into a set of statements and plans for the city that will guide us all. And it's more than you can do in one session, but I think it'll be a good start, and hopefully it'll give you an opportunity to really share your thoughts with each other and develop some consensus of goal and visions. So we're looking forward to it.
I think it's going to be...
The, we'll start at 5:30. We'll actually have some, you can come early, about 4:30 and get something to eat before we start the meeting, because it'll last a couple of hours.
It's on Tuesday, right?
Monday, the 25th.
Monday, the 25th, right.
Holiday Inn on Country Club and Sixth Street. And once again, that's the fourth Monday of the month, our study session scheduled meeting. So that's what we're using for it. Okay. Anything for upcoming meetings? That takes us down to appointments. And we do have Stillwater Public Housing Authority on there, and I would nominate Connie Stokes and David Spivey to reappoint them for another term. And that passes five to zero. Okay. Since executive session was stricken, that takes us down. And is there a motion to adjourn City Council?
Please approve.
And that passes five to zero. We have adjourned City Council, and I will immediately, if I can find my agenda again, call to order our February 21st, 2013 Stillwater Utility Authorities Meeting. And on the consent docket, we have items A through F. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent docket?
I would move approval of consent docket.
The consent docket is approved, five to zero. And wow, I don't want to miss anything like last time. And that's it, so...
None, none, none.
There's a bunch of nuns. Wanted to recheck to make sure. Is there a motion to adjourn Stillwater Utility Authority?
Please approve.
Passes five to zero, and we are adjourned. Thank you.